The school year, we were under the red, yellow, and green system. And so consequently, we weren't able to use the exemptions provided by the DOE SOP. And so consequently, I think, I think we've shared these numbers before. So in the, the first month of school, we went universally masked on September 27th. In the first month of school, we had to put out of school 254 students and staff to quarantine for 10 days because we did not have the ability to use the exemptions provided under the DOE SOP. On September 27th, the board voted to go universally masked. Since then, and this is just the month of October, since then, we had 394 staff and students who have been identified as close contacts. Because we are able to use the DOE exemption with regards to universally masking, all of the close contacts did not have to quarantine during the school hours, but needed to quarantine during after, from school-based activities, after-school and community-based activities. So if you think about that for a second, just in the month of October, 394 staff and students for 10 days, that's 3,940 days, school days, if you, if you really drill it down, that students, some of those students would have had to have missed, missed. Because we're able to use the exemption, all of them were able to stay in school five days a week from being identified as close contact in school. I think it's also important, and like I said, just a couple of more slides here, to understand that when we were under the choice, okay, if, if we had remained in the red, yellow, and green system, I'm actually going to use a different slide here. Well, regardless, I can't get to the next slide. But in September, okay, if we look at school days in September, if we had stayed under the red, yellow, and green system, Libby Tozer would have had 11 days of school in September, 15 days of school in October, and no days of school so far in, in November, where they would have had a choice, masking would have been a choice. When we go into an outbreak status, which we have, that means we had no longer, and that was the red system, we were under a red, we were identified in outbreak status, we no longer had the choice to universally mask. So one of the things I think it's important to note is, when we get to outbreak status, CDC calls us. And the CDC says, what mitigation strategies are you using? And if you tell them that you're not universally masked in outbreak status, they will tell you, you need to be universally masked. They won't give you a choice. And so, so based upon those numbers, so here's, here's the next slide that I think says it better. Out of 48 total school days, Libby Tozer would have had 26 days of which we would have, people would have had, students would have had a choice to mask or not. 22 would have been no choice. Sabates Primary would have had 35 days of choice out of 48, and 13 where we were in outbreak status. Cary Ricker would have had 42, so 87% of the time at Cary Ricker, they would have had a choice, with only 13% of the time, no choice. Oak Hill Middle School would have had 15% of their days, so seven out of 48, where they wouldn't need to be universally masked, would have been school, student-parent choice. Forty, 85% of the days would have been under the red, the red designation and outbreak status. Oak Hill High School, 54, would have been 54% of the time would have had a choice, and 46% of the time, not. And so I share this data because what it says is, is that because we were universally masked, we were able to keep kids in school five days a week. And that, that was the, from my perspective, that's the ultimate goal. You know, that's what we laid out, was keeping kids in school, and I think we've done that throughout the course of the last month or so. That's where we currently stand.
Okay, so that's where we came through the school year, it's where we are currently. One of the big goals in everything that we heard last year was parents wanted their kids in school as they should be, five days a week. And so our, one of our number-one goals for this year was to do everything we could to safely keep our students in school five days a week. That was the guidance that we had, and in order to do that, we've had to take the steps in progression to where we are now. Doesn't mean that a month, two months from now, things don't change, and that's not necessary anymore. That's why we're always reviewing the policy and taking a look at it and looking for recommendations from the CPT to bring them to the board. So that's where we are now, so that there was other, there, the other one, the other story that's out there was that because we accepted some federal funds, that we are required to mask. When that information came out about the grant in late spring, early summer, I read the law then. The law said nothing about requiring masks. I reread it again today, at least the section, 2000 section, which is with education, and there's nothing in there that requires that we have to have masks. So yes, we're getting federal money, as is every other school district in this state, whether they're mask optional or mask mandatory or no mask at all, they're getting the federal funds, just as we are, and it isn't because, we're not getting it because we agreed. If that had been a criteria, the superintendent would have had to come to the board, to get the board approval for something like that. That's a policy that the superintendent on his own cannot sign us into, but that was not the case with the law. So at this time, I'd like to open it up. We have allotted until roughly 7:15 for this. I'd like just a few minutes between maybe 7:10 and 7:15 for a short little break, as we kind of get set up, maybe if you'll have to use the facilities, and then we will call our meeting order and go into our regular business meeting for the, for the night. So we're going to open it up for Zoom. People raise your hands or send a chat, people in the audience. It's open to you. Please try and keep your statements short because we do have a limited amount of time. I ask that if you have a significant list of references and resources and data that you want to bring to us, that you kind of give us an overview and then give it to us in writing, because if everybody out there starts spilling out a whole bunch of different numbers and references and that, I doubt that we're going to remember it. And I really need, we really need to get that so the CPT, when it does meet, can consider that information as well. All right. So please, if you have something like that, give it to us in writing. You can send it to us tomorrow or the next day. It doesn't have to be tonight, because if you've just got to prepare to talk on, it's fine. So I'm not going to set a time limit, because that didn't seem to work well anyway, you know. So, but I ask you to please keep it short, and at that point, or at this point, we'll open it up for either questions about the plan that we just laid out, why we're where we are, or your, your own comments. And this is, this informational station is, is I think was published, was about our COVID-19 response. So if you're out there and you want to talk about spring baseball, we'll take that under comments from the floor during the meeting, and we'll just try and keep this to the COVID-19 if we could, please. All right.
I have some in the audience, and then I have some people on here.
Okay.
Do you want to have a person in the audience go first?
Uh, we can, yep. I didn't see a hand or anything. Go ahead. And please, everybody, online or in person, your name and the town of residence, please.
I'm Melinda Frichette, and I live in Sabates. I'm just looking for clarification's sake. You said that we were on the red, green, blue, or whatever, and then we had to swap over because of the SOP of the DOE. What exactly is the difference between the mask system we started with and what is the SOP that we had to swap over to? I don't, I don't know what it is.
Okay, understand. It's a good question. The red, yellow, and green was a, is a process that we put in to go and identify the status of each school, based upon the number of cases of COVID that were identified in the school. All right. Because that indicated when we had to have the students masked along with the staff all the time, so that we wouldn't have the close contact worry. As soon as the board went to universal masking, the red, yellow, and green went away, because the red, yellow, and green basically told us when we had to be masked and when we didn't have to be masked, but since we went universal masking. Now, the SOP, the SOP establishes some guidelines. Some of those guidelines were put up before where it goes and says, if you do this and this happens, this is what you have to do. One of those things is, if you are universally masked, you have a student or a staff member identified in your school with COVID, you identify the close contacts, but as long as you're universal masked and they're not showing any symptoms, they can continue to come to school. The students continue to come to school. Staff's a little different, but the students can continue to come to school as long as they're not showing any symptoms, which I think we all agree. If we have one of our, our kids is showing symptoms, we're not going to send them to school, hopefully. So that's, so that SOP, that lays out different things. So if, the other thing that we, we reck, or agreed to get into, we haven't started yet because of the time, was pool testing. Pool testing gives us the same thing universal mask does, except that for any student that's enrolled in pool testing, and, and we have the universal masking, they could participate in outside activities. Now, we call the parents and say to parents, your child was identified as a close contact. The information's out there that says, as long as they don't have any symptoms, they can come to school, participate in school, they're not supposed to participate in outside stuff. We're not the outside-stuff police. We're not going to go to Sabates Rec and see who's playing soccer or basketball, who's going to Sunday School Services, you know, and not where I'm at. That's not our job, we're not going to get involved in that. We just provide the information on what the state says, whether the parent follows it. Outside of the school, that's not, you know, that's not ours to, to police. Inside the school, it is. No symptoms, you were wearing a mask, you can come to school. We want you here sitting in the seat and learning as best we can. Does that answer your question, ma'am? You're welcome.
I'll go here. All right. Oh, yep. I was going to grab one on Zoom, babe.
My name's Caitlin Bailey. I'm from Sabates. I actually just had a couple of quick concerns that I thought should be taken into consideration. My son's five. He has a speech impediment that he struggled with. The first couple of weeks of school, when you did the, the light system, was fantastic for him, because he's able to see everybody's mouths and learn from that. Since he's had to wear the mask, not only is he frustrated from not being able to be understood, but he can't see anything. He's on the bus from 7:30 in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon with no choice but the mask. I guess I don't really understand with the close contact thing, because I would think that a person that is concerned with the spread of COVID, asymptomatic or not, if you're within a couple of feet of somebody, then your child's not staying home, because you're just keeping them in school, but they could still spread it. So I guess that just confuses me a little bit, and I'm, the numbers that you used with, well, they could have these many days not masked, and then these other days they would have to be masked. I would think that's better than masked 100% of the time. But so my major concern is mostly with my son. Emotionally, his eyes are downcast when he's on, at school with a mask all day, but he just, he can't get what he needs, like he's from, and he's frustrated all the time. And I just think that their emotional state, their emotional stage should be taken into consideration as well.
All right. Thank you for your comment. We'll go to Zoom.
Okay, Betsy Haskell?
Hi, thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name's Betsy. I'm a resident in Litchfield, and I am in favor of layered mitigation strategies, including masking and the option for pool testing enrollment, in order to significantly reduce the risk of infection for my two school-aged children. I do believe that there should be some compromise in regards to the emotional impacts, and perhaps there are things that we can come up with as a community on, whether it's having the teachers wear visors where their smiles can be seen and where they can make that connection with children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
Woody Bailey? You there, Woody?
I am, thanks. Um, I just have a question still. Bob mentioned how we weren't masking because of received [BLEEP] or funds at all, I guess. And earlier in the presentation, there was a comment that if there's a outbreak, then the CDC comes in. I just, I'm serious, who's, who's ultimately making the rules? Who's driving, you know, the bus? Who came up with the colored system? And what are we looking at in the future, I guess? And again, [BLEEP] Sabates.
All right, Mr. Bailey, well, the color system was ours. The CPT came up with that recommendation, brought it to the board so that we could determine what the situat, and parents could sign on and see what the situation was for their child's student, on whether or not they had to wear a mask or it was optional that day, and how many cases they were in case they were concerned and wanted to keep their student home and not send them to school. So that was the purpose of the red, yellow, and green. That universal masking was a policy set by this board to have that. Once you have an outbreak status, just like a nursing home or a hospital or anything else that we read about with outbreak status, then the CDC, main CDC, has some guidelines on what you have to do if there's an outbreak. That's, then all of a sudden kind of takes it out of our hands for that period of time that we have the outbreak. I think that I heard last night and again today that Wintrop has had to take some major steps because of the number of COVID cases they have there in their school system. So that, that's the story. So the normal policy for what we're doing is set by the school board. That's one of the school board's responsibilities laid out in statute, is to go and set policies for the efficient operation of the educational system. Different words if you look it up than that, but that's kind of what it means. So, but, once you reach a certain public health threshold, then the main CDC can step in, whether we, it was a small break, a smallpox outbreak here, unfortunately, we don't have those anymore, or some other contagious disease outbreak, the CDC could step in. So if we had a big cases of meningitis going through the school system, they could step in and give us some direction on what we need to do possibly to go and mitigate its spread. Does that answer your question?
For now, yeah. I didn't realize it was a [INAUDIBLE]. School board decision, thank you.
You're welcome. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Tiffany Hurd from Sabates. I have a couple of questions for clarification. The last slide you showed, Andy, it only showed green, which was mask choice, and red. I'm wondering if those red numbers include any time we would have spent in the yellow designation? And if you know what the difference would be between red, actual red days, and what would have been yellow?
I don't have, do we have that, do you have that data graphing?
Yeah. So in the board packet, it actually breaks down by school, by, so if you look, by school, you can actually see September, October, November, and you can actually see the numbered cases per school. Every time there's a red dot onto that date, that means outbreak status. So if there is a one case, that would be green. If there's two cases, that would be yellow. I could take some time and break that down, but it would take me probably a few minutes to figure that out. But ultimately, there's not that much difference between green and yellow. We don't have that many days that there's a difference. There's not that many yellow days, I guess.
In the original plan, wasn't it five and we went to red, which was remote schooling?
No, so.
It was three.
Two to three was yellow, and three and more is red, because that's outbreak status.
My concern is that we're using numbers, saying that was how many percentage of the school days the kids would have not been in-person school, when that's not exactly an accurate number at this point.
No, that, that actually, so the number I shared with you, the percentages, or percentage of days they would have been universally masked under the red, yellow, and green system.
Right, I understand what the numbers actually were, but when you represented, at one point, you said those were the percentage of school days we would have not been in school five days a week.
That, I guess, I didn't mean to say it like that. I apologize.
That's fine, I just wanted to make that clarification.
Yep, it was the percentage of days that they would have, we would have had to have worn masks, because we would have reached either yellow or green status.
Absolutely. So at that point in time, I also want to point out that on that last slide, other than the middle school, the majority of those days were actually showing green. So the majority of the school days thus far, our children would not have to have these muzzles on their faces.
But we still would have had a large amount of kids that had to quarantine. That's, that's the, that's my point. We're keeping kids in school five days a week.
That's great. I'm not here to argue with you.
No, I know, but I'm just saying that that's the point, is that by masking, we're keeping those kids, even in yellow status, from having to quarantine, and that means parents don't have to worry about daycare, stay home from work.
Thank you, I know what that means. Yep, I know exactly what that means. I've done my research.
Yep.
My other clarification I wanted to make, and it's really more, I guess you don't have to answer, but mask breaks, we were told that our kids would have mask breaks. I have three kids, they are in two different schools. One of them gets mask break, other than lunch and snack. That's a big problem. I want everyone to think about, how much of your day do you get to spend without this on your face? How many times do you take the mask off your face and go, "I can breathe"? In your day, every day, how many hours straight do you need to wear it? Because our kids are wearing their mask, some of them from 7:00 AM when they get on the bus, until almost 3:00 when they get off. It's suffocating to think about it, and it makes me sick. My kids have sores on their face, they don't feel well, they have stomach aches at the end of the day. It's sick that you guys are doing this.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else on Zoom?
Yeah, two more on Zoom.
All right, we got a couple more on Zoom.
Kim McFarland?
Hi, this is Kim from Sabates. I just have a comment more towards the letter that went out to parents when you guys decided to go ahead and read face mask. I just want to make a comment that I felt that the way it was written was inappropriate. I'm a COVID nurse, and when it comes down to it, I start thinking about the community as a whole. The way it was written, it seemed to just target the fact that we were wearing face masks in order to protect the non-vaccinated, and that's how I took it. And so I was very disheartened to see that and to read that, especially the parent who chose to vaccinate their child for his own safety. I just find it really hard the way it was presented to the community, and I just feel like when we start to send out communications that are that sensitive to everyone, that we need to be more thinking about how we word things. And I would have liked to see it as we are choosing to re-mask or, or do universal masking again in order to protect our entire community, not just one population of people. There's too many things in this world where we're going one population versus another population, and I think we need to get away from that. Thank you.
Hey, can I ask you before you go?
Sure.
What, you mentioned the letter that went out about masking. Was that back in September, or is there?
Whenever we chose to go back to get remasking, I did send out an email to the superintendent, but I didn't get a response back, so I was kind of disheartened by that. But I, I just feel like everybody needs to, to know how that kind of comes across, because people that are on the school board that don't have kids may not necessarily understand how that felt and how it was written and how people were perceiving that. Because as a parent, if it was written as, we're doing this in order to protect the community and keep people safe, I wouldn't have been as upset as I was when I read it for the reasons that you guys said that we were doing it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I thank you for that input. It certainly wasn't my intention.
I mean, I, I would empower this whole board team and even the superintendent to pull that back out and read it. And I think that a lot of parents that are upset, this all started back then, to be honest.
I thank you for the input, and we do need to make sure that all of our communication goes out as carrying the right message. Sometimes.
Yeah, I just think that that message, you know, me working in the field, day in and day out, when we have clear, clear communication to all of our patients as well as the family members, it's always, we're doing this to keep your family protected and keep the community protected. And I think that's what the goal of this school board is trying to do.
Yes, it was. That was part of our discussions about, you know, something that's in the school doesn't just stay in the school, it goes home, goes out in the community.
It's COVID virus, I'm looking at putting, probably he will not want me to get through that, my husband and I know that. So it's really important for us that we do what we can do to keep everybody safe, but I do think, you know, I understand where parents are coming from, but to me, it's the communication part that's a big key for me. I, I would have liked to see it written as protect the community or protect our children, something to that in nature, instead of, we're doing this in order to make sure that the kids that aren't vaccinated can stay in school more. Because it made me feel like my kid wasn't as important as the kids that were not vaccinated being able to stay in school longer. That's, that's how I took it as a mom.
All right, thank you for your input. We will.
You're welcome.
We will try and do better.
Thank you.
All right, you have another one?
Megan?
Hi, this is Megan, and I'm from Sabates. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So my question is, now that kiddos who are under 12, or well, under 12 and up to five, are able to get vaccinated, once they are fully vaccinated, because I know mine will be mid-December, is there going to be any change in anything, or is it all going to stay the same with universal masking, which is fine with me, but I just want to know if or what the changes will be?
So, as I, as I kind of alluded to earlier, and over the past several months, as things change, our CPT committee that we're going to try and formulate tonight, from what, what we had been using to a new membership status, that team will get together, they will look at what has changed, immunizations, vaccinations, and that will be something that will certainly be looked at, what the percentages are, and, and make it as part of the recommendation, whatever, however they see that it may fit. And then it goes to board, and then the board will have its discussions about the new information that we may be aware of out there, and ask questions, and then come up with a change to the policy or no change of policy. It'll be up to the board as a whole at that point to go and look into it. So I'm, I'm very hopeful that at some time in the future, there will be significant changes to this policy, and that we won't require masks for everybody, but we're not there yet, in my opinion, and we will keep, have to evaluate that. And as we reevaluate the information and we get feedback, we will make the best-informed decision we can at the time.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your call. Anybody else?
Hi, Laura Clifford from Sabates. I would like to second Tiffany's response earlier with the inconsistency throughout the district that different principals have and different teachers have and different bus drivers and, and all of it. It's just a lot to try to keep up with it, and my kiddos do not have mask breaks either at the middle school. And we did receive a letter or an email stating that they did have mask breaks in designated places, and I asked for clarification where those were, because my child doesn't know where they are, nor do. where they are, nor do a lot of their friends. Um, and there was zero response to that, so I said, you know, I could ask their teachers and probably go that route, um, but I don't, I don't understand why there's not clear, great communication with that, so maybe that's something that, you know, you could look at or take into consideration. Um, you know, same thing kind of on the buses, they wear them, they don't wear them, um, whatever, whatever at this point. Um, but I also wasn't quite sure about this community session, if it was, because it seems to be a lot of community just talking with one kind of board member and, and another, but, um, as we've elected each of you from our different towns, um, is there any kind of, is this just a chair and community conversation, or can we hear from some of our other board members, or is this the time that everyone kind of talks?
Yes, as long as we make sure that we go through it and the board, you know, the chair recognizes you, which I will do, but so we don't have a bunch of people talking at once.
Yeah, because I know we're about, um, 40 minutes into it, and I know you've primarily done most of the talking here, um, so I didn't know if any of our board members have a question, because I've been up here, I don't know, two years now, um, and multiple emails, and I appreciate, um, you know, everyone that I have emailed that responded. Might not be the answer I have wanted, um, our conversation, but I do appreciate an open conversation anyway, um, with those of you that have had that. But does any one of you have questions for me or any of our other members from your communities that have children in the district that took our time out to come here, um, as well? Do you have any questions that you would like to ask me? Or any of us?
Well, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna open that up, I mean, it is an exchange.
Yeah.
So far, the statements have come, and one of my responsibilities is the board shares and respond, to take them back and forth, so. That's why I speak, if Robbie was sitting up here, Robbie would have been done all the answering, or Vicki.
Yeah, I, I got it.
Or whoever, all right, so, but, I mean, I am hoping that the board members themselves will, if, if they so feel, will be able to speak and maybe talk about what their feeling is on the current policy and where they might think, I don't know, if any of us know where we're going to go on.
Do any of you have a question for me?
I, I don't have a question, but I have a comment to make, and my comment would be, as I voted for the, the stoplight plan, I thought it was a great plan, and I made a comment at that meeting, that it's only going to be as good as the community wants it to be. So, if the community is not following what we need to do to make that plan work and brings cases of COVID into our school community, it's going to fail, and that's exactly, in my opinion, what happened. That plan failed. We had 256 students and staff that had to quarantine in the first month. Last year, the comment we heard from everybody is, "I want my student in school five days a week." They need to have in-person instruction. And in order to do that and follow the SOP, we had to go to universal masking to keep students in school. That's how I came to my decision. I asked my family doctor, I asked, my kids are too old now, but I called the pediatrician's office, and they recommended that students in school be masked. The American Association, Academy of Pediatricians say students should mask indoors.
So, can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
So, they recommend that students wear masks indoors?
Yes.
So, why can't you recommend to me that my student wears a mask indoors, and I get to choose if that happens or not? Why do you tell me what's best for my child and my family?
Because we follow the SOP.
Recommendation.
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 From the CDC, main CDC, the federal CDC, and the Department of Ed.
I think all of us do. We, uh, those of us that have been in healthcare for quite some time, we always sanitize, we always bound up, we always do these things, because they're recommended, but we get to choose if we do those things.
Okay, so you would rather have over 250 kids be remote, be home quarantining, or have the school closed down with remote learning than have kids in school, because that's what's going to happen?
Because of the numbers that you chose on the original plan?
That's what, that wasn't our number. That's the CDC number of an outbreak, of any, anything over three, right Kathy? That's the SOP, that's the standard operating procedure.
All right, so, anybody else? So, we're just not a back and forth, in a kind of a adversarial, I'd like to say, as little adversarialness as possible.
Yeah.
Just exchange ideas, yes.
Sure, I'm happy to chat about like, how.
Can I say one thing about that real quick? I don't want to interrupt, but I just want to stay on that. Would it poss, would it be possible? Oh, sorry, I'm Derek, I'm from Wales. Uh, would it be possible if we kept the stoplight plan, when we go to red? It's an option for remote learning or universe, if you want to go to the school.
It doesn't, it doesn't work that way.
Well, what?
Because that's not the way the SOP is written.
Is it something that the CPT could consider?
Right.
This SOP is a requirement, not a recommendation, so the SOP is how we have to handle things when we have a positive case, regardless of how many there are, it is a requirement of how we have to handle every positive case we have. So, it is not a choice, once we have a positive case, of how we handle things and how we have to determine close contacts. So, to your, your question is, it's not a choice. Once we get into outbreak status, we actually have more stringent, um, requirements that's outlined, outlined in the SOP of how we have to follow it. The SOP is a requirement, not a recommendation.
Did that answer your question? Because I can actually talk back today.
No, it's just, no, it's just another thing that I don't understand with all this, just like the numbers, where it said September was 290 something, we're looking at October numbers where we can mask, we're at 3 something?
Right.
That's cases, but there's no in-school transmission?
Right.
Right, if we didn't wear masks, how many, and we don't know?
We don't know that.
Well, through our contract tracing, as smart as I know, we're not, we haven't identified any in-school, no in-school transmission that's been identified at this point, and that's done by their contract tracing, that's done by CDC, based, when we give them the student's name, so they go out and look and see where their associations were and where others may have had COVID-19 that they were in contact with, all right? And it hasn't come from the school setting. If our students and staff weren't wearing masks, we can only guess. There may have never been a single additional case, there may have been an additional hundred cases, or two hundred cases.
Again, that's where I'm confused, because the, we go out to recess, we have lunch, we're unmasked, there's 394 people that have tested positive, they're not here during those times?
Right, but.
394 kids did not test positive.
Close contacts, okay.
Close contacts, which means maybe your kid was in a space less than six feet apart for 15 minutes, maybe, is the, I, I got a call, my kiddo was a close contact, but it was, well, we think so, but we're not sure, okay? But because we were universally masked, we didn't have to quarantine for 10 days. And just like Robbie said, like, so when we started and we had the stoplight plan, we were coming off of summer, and things looked really good when we came back from summer, because Maine hadn't had the Delta variant in our communities yet. And you can look at the data, and whether you not, or you believe, I'm not going to go back and forth around that, but as soon as September hit, there was this ginormous wave of cases that went up, not only in our older population, but also in our younger population. So, we were not seeing spread for kiddos in kind of the school age thing, you hear that a lot, like, kids don't die from COVID. You're right, like, looking at the data, they totally don't. However, as school kind of ramped up, we watched cases in all of our communities also ramp up. And for me as a mom, my kids went to school, when we had the choice, they wore masks. I have kids in the district, I've got a first grader, and I have a fourth grader. Within, I think it was the fifth day of school, my first grader had to be out of school for seven days, after coming off of an awful kindergarten year and an awful pre-K year, we can all agree, the last couple of years have been really, really hard on our kids, right? So, for me, I had to take a pause and be like, okay, like, as much as I want to give parents a choice, universally masking guarantees that more kids get to stay in school, and we're talking about the emotional downturn of kids, and I share that all the time. And yes, masking does contribute to that, but really, it's the, it's the disconnect from being away from school all of those times. So, if there's one little thing that we can do to help kind of keep them in school so they can have that social piece and that education that they deserve, it's the masking. Do I want to revisit it? Absolutely. As we look at the numbers, and if we see a huge downturn, we can go back. I would be so happy to be able to give, especially our high school and our middle school students that have been fully vaccinated, like, they must feel like, okay, we did this for the greater good and we still have to wear masks, I get it, like, I understand, but right now, this is what we can kind of mitigate, that's.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Um, so, for the kids that parents are, don't plan on getting them vaccinated, and will pull their kids from school if it's a requirement, um, with what you just said, as rewarding essentially kids that are vaccinated to not wear masks, do you think that in the future, that unvaccinated kids will regardless always have to wear a mask?
No, absolutely not, because if, and let's say if, because we know there's so much data out there, if the vaccines work the way that the scientists say the vaccines work, and we're not going to debate whether or not, because that's a personal choice, right? Um, we should see a downturn in cases. If we see a downturn in cases, then we can revisit our mask and go back to the red.
Can I, can I ask for maybe a show of hands, if you're comfortable? Um, with how many people on our board would still require, if you're not vaccinated, children, no matter what their age, because five to 11 can be vaccinated now, um, so if your child is not vaccinated, will your recommendation to the conversation be that they should always wear a mask until they get vaccinated?
May I ask before I answer? I mean, that's a broad spectrum, we talking about next week?
I think it depends on how many cases there are.
Right.
And what percentage of vaccination there is.
Right.
I mean, there's a lot of things that have to be reviewed and taken into consideration as we go down the path, so to ask a question about.
Well, I think, I think the majority of everyone just answered it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I also would say that I, I hear your frustrations with this, because my question that I am always asking, the ethereal question is, what is the ultimate end game of all of this? And so, as a board, we are always in a position where we have to reevaluate, we have to reevaluate on what all of you talk about and what the kids need, but also the things that are non-negotiable in terms of the SOPs that we have to follow according to the Department of Education and the CDC. I will tell you that I look forward to when we can honestly say that masks are not required. However, at this point, for us to be able to be committed to what we said, to have kids in school, if this is the least obstruction, if you will, um, to keep them here, then I'm all for that. Yes, I, I completely hear what all of you are saying, and I will honestly say that we all get frustrated. We get frustrated with different aspects of all of this, I think that's pretty normal, honestly. But in terms of being able to know what the end game is, we don't know, we have to remain flexible, but we also have to keep in mind that our ultimate job is to keep kids in school, because that's what's needed.
All right, I need to interrupt, because we've gone past the 7:15, we're supposed to be in our school board meeting. I thank everybody for their inputs, their comments, I thank everybody for staying civil and listening to the other side. Probably nobody's minds have changed, but you've had an opportunity to express your feelings.
Scott had his hand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to first start by saying I could not disagree more with Mr. Gaten's stance on the red, yellow, and green plan that we had. I do not think it was the community that failed that plan, I truly believe it was the board that failed. We only had that plan in place for two weeks, we didn't give it a chance to work. Matter of fact, it did work, because Okio Middle School was unmasked, or, or they had the option to mask, then they went to yellow where they had to wear masks, and then they returned back to green. This gave the kids an opportunity to at least experience school without masking. Carrie Ricker School would never, they were, they never went into the yellow, they were green the whole entire time, until we changed the universal masking. I, I just, I, the, the woman that had the, the child with the, the speech problem, that really spoke volumes to me. Mr. Wilson, a couple of meetings ago, had mentioned that he experienced a, a, increased the office referrals, increase in behavior problems, increase in suicides, or attempted suicides at home, kids hurting themselves, and so what's changed between this past year and the years prior? It's masking, okay? Mr. Wilson said, "When kids are coming through the door, I can identify emotional issues because I could, I used to be able to see the smile on their face, I can't see that anymore." Okay, God gave us faces for a reason, we need to get back to that. We'd never, th, th, this was just overturned quickly, two weeks, we had the old plan and not, we just flipped the switch and went to universal masking, without even asking for community input. It, it, I mean, come on, people, let's make some changes here. Oh, hold on a second. There are options. Personally, for me, I would prefer to have my kids homeschooled, I would, I would prefer them to be remote if they had to have to wear a mask. That's my opinion, I never was given that option. We have all these, we have all this COVID money sitting there, we have the ability to be leaders here, okay? There's no other schools that are doing this. We could implement a remote learning classroom environment like none other and be leaders, but instead, we took the easy way, we flipped the switch, went to universal masking.
All right, so we need to go on and get into the school board meeting. So, again, thank you all. And at this time, uh, although it's late, I'll call this meeting to order, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance, flags are up here. I can get out of this seat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, any agenda adjustments?
I have none.
All right, then we'll go on to consideration of the minutes. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 13th, 2021 Board of Directors meeting, please. Been moved and seconded, Vicki and Robbie? Any corrections?
Yes. Um, on 7.1, under new business, uh, it says there were 45 officer calls.
Should say referrals.
It needs to say office referrals. Please?
Yeah, we did not, yeah, we did not call the police 45 times.
No, heavens no.
Are there any others? So then I will ask for a vote to approve the minutes as corrected. All those in favor? Opposed? Right. Okay? Public comment, so, again, this is the time when we open the floor for public comments that have to do. We've had a lot of COVID discussion, I'm not about to go and say that you can't talk COVID again, but, um, please, let's keep it down, we do have a lot of business to get on the, get taken care of, but the public comment's an important section, that's why we have it, uh, and it's why it's in statute that we provide it. But again, this will be back to the format of make your comments, and then we'll move on to the next person if there's more, and then we'll get back to business. Understood? So, on Zoom or in person? Yes, ma'am?
No.
No, the people out in, in Zoom and places can't.
Believe me, they can hear me. My name is Melinda, and I come from Sabados, and I want to thank you and you for participating, bringing some voice of reason to the informational portion. It's nice to hear other people just share the information, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, Laura, again, from Sabatys. Um, so I have a couple of things. Um, you know, the buses situation I saw on the agenda, not to jump ahead, but there's a bus driver retiring. Um, and then that kind of feeds into, uh, the calls that Andy used to do last year, like the Zooms once a month or every few weeks or something, just to, it kind of helped, I think. I don't know what other people think, but I think it really helped kind of put some of the chitter chatter to bed and the assumptions and kind of, you know, all that noise. Um, so I don't know if that's something that maybe will be considered in the future. It was like a one hour kind of random in the day type of thing, but, um, I thought they were pretty beneficial that we could hear, have conversation back and forth and things like that as well, or recommendations and not necessarily always have to come to this space to, to do that. So I thought they were helpful.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to go over to Zoom?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, my name is Heather Libby, and I work in RSU4 at Sabatys Primary School. Um, tonight, I just wanted to speak quickly on behalf of the RSU4 Education Association. Um, I'm co-president of that. And tonight, I just wanted to ask, this is an item on your agenda, if you would consider an amendment to the new structure of the CPT team. Parent input is invaluable, but as an association, um, we would like to see that there be equal parts of staff to parents on this team. Right now, the team is situated to have six parent representatives and three staff member And we would like to have staff be awarded an equal opportunity to offer ideas and opinions and vote regarding decisions that directly impact our jobs. Um, and while three staff members would have the ability to speak on behalf of our staff, I have a proposal that I would like for you to consider, and that would be having six members from our staff being on this committee as well. With six members on this committee, we would have the opportunity to have one staff member from each of our schools, as well as one of our executive board members. And so mainly the decisions that the CPT team makes really affect all of our schools differently. And so for those reasons, moving forward, I was hoping that we could consider amending the number of positions from three to six, um, so that we would be able to best represent the needs of, in each of our buildings while maintaining equitability, um, on this team. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the input. We'll bring that up under discussions on the CPT. All right, Kim?
Bergeron.
Hi. Hi. Sorry, can you hear me?
We can.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, I'm sorry. Um, so I was just wondering in regards to the universal masking and close contact stuff. I don't, I'm sorry, because I know this is after the question and answer time, but I have two children, one at Sabatys Primary and one at Carrie Ricker. I know for sure that there was at least one time that, um, one of my children was a close contact in class since universal masking came into play. Why have we not been informed of a close contact? Because we're still supposed to quarantine in the community, which I still don't understand, but.
Well, that's a good question. If they were determined to be a close contact, there should have been a contact reached out to. If I could get you for just personal privacy considerations, if you can send an email to the superintendent with a subject, something about no COVID contact.
Okay.
And address it there. That way, names of staff and names of students and et cetera can be discussed in a private, private scenario.
I understand totally.
And Kim, we'll, I, I've written this down, and we'll, we'll reach out to you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. I just, because, yeah, thank you. I will say not much more. How's that?
All right, thank you, Kim.
Thank you, guys. I know you have a hard job. I appreciate all that y'all do, and we'll get through this eventually.
Anybody else?
Uh, Kim McFarlane.
Kim McFarlane?
First of all, I want to say thank you to all of you guys. It's not a hard, it's a very hard job, what you're doing. Um, no one wants to, a universal mask. I don't want a universal mask. No one wants to. But at this time in the community, and, um, it's, it's not safe. Um, so I commend you for everything that you're doing up there, um, and trying to keep our children safe. My question, or what I would ask the board to consider that has nothing to do with COVID, is I had a great conversation with the assistant principal for the high school yesterday night, um, and I wasn't going to attend today, but I just wanted to see if it can be brought up when it comes to regards of curriculum for next year. Um, we have some unbelievable talented children in our music program with instruments as well as vocal. This past year, we ended up having to make some adjustments, is my understanding, where our choir teacher had to go down to the middle school, and the band teacher is now at the high school. Um, so my son and other students have brought it to my attention that it's not the same to have a band teacher try to teach them how to sing, especially if they're not very strong in a piano. And so my son, who's very talented, is missing out on a good opportunity by not having that specialized teaching. And what I asked is, everybody that's probably on that board has had some child that's had some talent. And if it comes to our football team, we give them the best coaches, and we get everybody they need to for their sports, and we try to showcase them so that they can get scholarships and they can get what they need there. I'm concerned that we're not doing that for the performing arts as much, um, especially with our vocal. And if you guys in the school board have not seen how talented your, your kids are right now, you're missing out. I've never seen such talent.
All right, thank you for the comments. Yeah, music's always a tough one when we do our budget discussions.
When is that going to happen? Because I'd like to be there. If that's something that comes in the notes, I guess that's what I don't understand.
So the, the budget discussions will start probably January?
Okay.
Or February? That's what, that's, it's, matter of fact, the budget is already in process, because the administrators are already working with staff to get their recommendations, what they want into the central office, who will then meet, and they'll do a lot of chipping away and then accomplish.
If I need to show that I have a support for the community that we need to inquire on having a choir teacher, do I need to get a petition going and get stuff signed to present to the school board?
I mean, you can do that. I, I think people coming up, just as you are, under comments from the floor and during our budget discussions, because typically in the past, uh, we've had our budget discussions, and then, as Sharon can attest, because she, I think, made every school board meeting that I can recall, uh, we'll actually allow people in the, uh, in attendance to go and comment on the budgets, and we do that with the select persons, meet the towns.
My concern is, is that the way it was presented to us as parents was through, and just a kind of quick, like, hey, um, in order to keep the exposure rate and to keep the transper- transforming COVID from one school to the other school, we're going to have one teacher stay at one school and one in the other. And that was fine and all, until I go on Facebook and I read that, that's not happening for the younger students, that there are teachers that are going from one school to the other school. And to be honest with you, those students are at higher risk right now than the ones that are partially vaccinated that are your high school and junior high kids. So that would be my comment to that.
All right, thank you. And so there's probably, we can't add staff this during the budget season right now, but it'll sort of.
I understand that. I just, I want to make it, um, I want to fight for these kids, because I, I think that they deserve to have somebody that's going to te- teach them and their talent. I mean, my son was asked to audition for National Choir, and he didn't find out until 24 hours prior to having to audition. That was a really, that really was disheartening to me.
Yeah, it would be to me as well, if I had been in your situation.
Yeah.
Obviously, and it's been pointed up about other things too, communications, communications, communications.
Thank you.
You know, everybody's busy, and there's a lot of communications to do, but we got to try and always do our best that we can. Anybody else?
Yeah, Erica.
Erica?
Yes, hi. Sorry, that's my wife. Uh, my name's Amy Dennis. I'm, uh, from Sabatys, and I just wanted to, uh, thank the board for all the hard work they're doing and all the tough discussions that they're facilitating. Um, my question is in regards to, um, deeming children close contacts, and if we have any data to show how many, um, close contacts have actually contracted COVID, um, in the RSU4, um, just so that data could be used to, um, look at and make adjustments to the distance requirement, because there is conflicting guidelines from federal CDC, which is six feet, and Maine DOE, which is three feet, for deeming children close contacts. I didn't know if that's data that we have looked at yet.
I don't know. I, I have to defer to, are we tracking any, any, any person who had been deemed to be a close contact at one point or another, who then is identified later as having COVID?
Yes, so we actually have to, uh, do a spreadsheet that gets submitted. We have to do a Google form and a spreadsheet that gets submitted to the DOE for every single, um, case that we get, uh, so every positive case we get. Um, currently, we have zero that we have traced that is linked from, um, positive case to positive case. Um, however, we do know in our community that there are families that have, um, transmitted it within the family. Um, so inter-community, there are case to case within families, but in our schools, we've had zero, and we know that through our DOE tracing, as well as our contact tracing, um, CDC managers that we consult with.
Hold on one second, till you get your mic back up. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, so if we know that that number is zero in the RSU4 system, would the board be willing to reduce the distance for deeming close contact so that more children can stay in school and not have to quarantine?
So.
And I'm referencing, um, Section 4, um, of the Maine State DOE, subsection F, um, number four for the exceptions, where it says three feet.
Okay, so this is, all right, so this is, again, and I'm sorry, I should not have replied earlier, this is the comments section. So we can take your comments. That's information that should be provided to the CPT to help them base their recommendations on how we go forward. And if you don't have a further comment, then we'll go to the next comment. You're welcome. Natasha?
Hi, Natasha. I actually have a question about the survey that you guys sent out in regards to the late start or early release. Um, did we get any results on that? Are we, when is that going to be discussed? I don't see it on the agenda, so.
Yeah, probably, it wouldn't have made tonight's, because tonight's is trying to catch up.
Right, I, yeah.
I believe the, uh, CAI committee met this evening, and I think there'll be a report under the CAI committee reports.
And we do have a plan that they will review tonight.
Okay, that's, that was.
All right, thank you. So at this time, we will move on? Go ahead.
I'll make it quick. Tiffany from Sabatys, again. Um, I am looking at your board bylaws here, and I just want to point out, it's specifically the bylaws about unexpired term fulfillments and vacancies, where it states in the first paragraph, "A vacancy shall be declared when the term of office of a board of directors expires, when a board of director changes residency from the municipality from which elected, upon the death of a board of a director, when a board of director resigns or excepted municipalities having a municipal charter, when a board of director is absent without excuse from three consecutive regular board of directors meetings." I've been through all of the minutes for the board meetings for the last year. One of our sitting board members at this point, up until tonight, has been to one board meeting on September 8th, as far as I know. All the rest have been absent unexcused, and so I would urge you to put on your next agenda, or I don't know if you need to have an emergency meeting or whatever, but technically, according to your bylaws, that would be a vacancy.
So which member is that?
Ms. Upham.
Hmm?
Ms. Upham.
Ms. Upham?
Yep.
Well, she had a couple of excused absences. She didn't have three consecutive.
They all show unexcused in the board minutes, which have been approved.
Well, then that was an oversight, because she talked to us about, she talked to us about the out of town.
The board minutes were approved by the board, showing unexcused absences. I'm just up here to point that out, because if we're following the board laws, we need to follow them.
Okay, and we can take care of that, but.
My mother has Alzheimer's, and I went home to take care of her.
All right, and those were excuses. If we didn't indicate that in the minutes, then that was an oversight in the minutes, okay? So, all right. Now with comments, we're going to go on petitions, communications. Going to mention that we, uh, superintendent and I received a, a petition at the end of, uh, oh, two weeks ago, uh, when the meeting was canceled, was handed to us, signed by forty-some people, some of which reside in Canada and other states, but we received it. And, uh, and we have looked at it, and I believe the superintendent has talked with Ms. Smith about it already, got together, and they had a discussion. I don't know how that went. I'm sure that not everybody agreed with everything on either side, but hopefully it was a good conversation.
It was a great conversation, actually.
I would agree.
Super, that's good to hear. So that had been received. Um, reports, 5.1, the superintendent's report.
So just a couple of things for me tonight. We met as Westermaine superintendents this morning. Um, I can tell you, a lot of the stuff we're talking about here is what we're talking about as superintendents. There's a lot of angst, um, throughout the state with regards to masking, with regards to distancing, regards to the SOP, and I think, you know, we all exist in a state of, of kind of flux at the moment, which is incredibly frustrating. I can, you know, it's frustrating for all of you, it's frustrating for the kids, and it's frustrating for us. That was pretty much the dominating topic of conversation today. Um, one of the things that is currently a, well, I say football, but it's a football that's being kicked around, are winter sports guidelines. We met as an NBC superintendent and talked about it. The MPA, MSSA, and the DOE met today. Um, rumor has it, there will be some guidelines coming out of that. Um, I, you know, the winter sports is coming, and we just don't know at this point. Other than that, moving on to the agenda, uh, we do have a couple of resignations. Amanda Ackley, a grade five teacher at Oak Hill Middle School. Susan Johnson, a tech three at Oak Hill Middle School. And then, then a couple of retirements I just want to talk about real quick. Uh, first one is Scott Eldridge. Uh, Scott Eldridge has been the business manager in RSU4 for the last 11 years, um, and, and I have to tell you, has done some amazing work. I, I, I don't want to speak for the board, um, but some of the things that we have done fiscally, um, direct, are a direct result of the work that Scott has done. And so, you know, those are, those are going to be big shoes to fill in RSU4. Um, you know, we wish Scott well. Um, Scott is, is ready to move on to a different chapter in his life, um, but I, I have appreciated working with him for the last 10 years. Uh, the next one, Norma Jean Adet. Um, I've had the pleasure of working with Norma Jean for the last 10 years. Norma Jean has been our technology director. If you think about where we were, uh, for those of you that have been around, um, 10 years ago with technology to where we are today, um, the work that she has done, the staff that she's put together, um, are, are pretty amazing. And so again, you know, big loss for us. She's ready to move on, uh, to, to retirement, um, so again, those will be large shoes to fill. Last one is Lisa Gowl, bus driver. Lisa has worked for the district for a long time. And, you know, driving a bus takes a special person. It really does. If you think about, Robbie and I actually talked about this the other day, didn't we? You think about, you know, the, the split hours, the trips, the driving a bus with sixty kids on it, it takes a special person. And so, you know, we wish Lisa well in retirement. Sad to see her go, because she is a fantastic bus driver. Other than that, that concludes my report.
Any questions? Okay. So we don't have any of the principals' reports or administrator reports, no student report, no other reports. So we're gonna go into old business, six point one. Is gonna be a discussion of CPT membership. So we can hash this all out, and then we get to the motion underneath it, alright?
Alright, so if you remember correctly, I just want to connect here to the screen. We had a lot of discussion at our last meeting about the, what the CPT team might look like moving forward. One of the things, so before now, the CPT team has been a district working committee that I oversaw. We put it together at the request of the DOE. It was in the framework for reopening schools. It was a recommendation from the DOE, and so we did that. It was bred out of a meeting that, that Bob and I had with the association early on, and I think it served its purpose well. Moving forward, I think it's really important that we establish this as a board advisory committee. So, and, and that, when you do that, when you establish it as a board advisory committee, it has some specific things that have to happen. And I think that's really important. So, again, we had a large discussion about membership at the last meeting, and so I put down what I believe came out of that discussion. So, out of that discussion came six parents, two from each town. And the composition will try to cover grade spans pre-K to two, three to four, five through eight, and nine through twelve. I have a question mark there with regards to how do we appoint those members? And I think that's something this board has to decide, how we want to go about that. I, I don't know that I have a suggestion. There are many ways that we can do that. A high school student, appointed by the high school principal. Three staff members, appointed by the RSU four EA. One support staff, one professional staff member, and one other of the association's choosing. One of the school nurses, appointed by myself. A building administrator, appointed by the Administrative Association, the Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, a board member appointed by a majority-voted the board, which would be a non-voting member. And then the superintendent, or my designee, would act as a facilitator only with no voting rights. So, you know, I think that encapsulates the conversation. I think what needs to happen now is the determination of, is that, is that the combination of people that we want? And how do we want to appoint members of the community?
So if we had somebody come up, talk about increasing the number of staff, so they'd be equal with parents, that is, that comment would only apply to a certain segment, because if I look at it, we have three staff appointed by the Education Association. Then we have a nurse, which is a, a staff member, a building administrator, and then director of curriculum. So there are six administrative or other, there are six staff people there who all are impacted. And I think that, you can't make this too big, so it gets completely unwieldy, but my comment, I think we have six and six.
Yeah.
But that's the way I look at it, but thoughts, please?
I guess the only concern that came up in my brain is, will there be representation from each of the schools for staff? So the way we have it laid out now...
Not with just three?
Right. So I wonder if...
But we, we don't have it from each of the principals either, right?
Right, but I think what I was hearing from the comment, from the person that called in, they were looking for six staff people. But I wonder, right now we say three staff members appointed by the EA. When we break that down, should we say five? One from each school with the representation, at least one being a support staff, one being a professional, and one being... I don't know. I just, I think, I think there's some value in having representation of the folks that work in the buildings. And that's not laid out in the way that we've proposed it. The other thing for consideration, I want to make sure, is captured, is term limits. I know we had spoken about that, so...
What was that?
Term limits?
Oh, term, yeah.
And that's on the next one.
Okay.
So, with the association representation, it's kind of like with our bargain agreement. You know, they kind of control who they provide for representatives. I mean, we can ask that. Can we, could we hold them to bringing a staff member in from each of the schools, or is it the EA and they decide who they're gonna send?
Well, I think you, as a board advisory committee, you actually get to make that choice. What we had talked about was three staff numbers appointed by the EA. And delineated to one supports, one person from the support staff collective bargaining unit, one person from the professional staff collective bargaining unit, and then another of the association's choosing. If, if you wanted to delineate between all five buildings, you could keep that framework and then make sure that it, it had those three, but we had to have representation from each building.
So I'd like the board to consider that, or put that up for consideration. I feel like that's just...
Do you have other comments? This is the first one to decide on whether we're going to increase that, that number? To some number other than three?
Well, like Andy said, if we can, you know, can, we can put it in there that there's one person from, at least from each school.
Right, and not all staff members belong to the Education Association. The support staff is completely different from that. They have their own representation, so consequently, I would, I would be in favor of, you know, like Chrissy said, you know, have that. It's gonna enlarge it by three more people.
Right, I mean, it was written this way originally to allow each bargaining unit to have a representative, allow the building administrators to have a representative, the central office to have a representative, and also the school nurse, all of which would be voting people. Alright, so that's why initially it was written this way?
I, I would just think...
So give us a number. What do you want?
I would say at least one person from every building.
So Chrissy says five, that's five, that's five buildings?
Right.
Okay. Is there an objection to that, increasing it to five? Scott?
I don't know, I'm just kind of doing the math, because you'd have the superintendent, you have the board of curriculum, building administrator, nurse, these are all people that work within the school system. At some point, it almost outweighs the parental input composition of it, so I would be mindful of that.
And so the superintendent is a facilitator only by...
And I know they're not a voting member, but still, they're participating in meetings and have input.
Right, and I think reality says that once a committee's formed, that the membership chooses its chairperson. So, you know, that chairperson will keep it going, but the superintendent will still be there to help facilitate and be able to get, make sure we get the information for that committee that they need. Alright, so I kind of get a consensus that we can go with five? Making sure that the intent is spelled out to cover each of the buildings?
Yes.
And have representatives from each of the bargaining units represented? Okay? Alright, super.
Sure. Alright, moving on, so if you remember...
Do you want to go back to how we're going to appoint the community members?
Yeah.
Since it's on the sheet?
Yep. How do we want to appoint community members?
So I mean, if we had, in my mind, if we had vibrant PTAs, there's boosters is pretty vibrant, but these organizations that are made up of parents that are involved in the schools, that perhaps they could recommend from their group, somebody to represent them? Not so much represent the PTA, but to be a parent on the advisory committee. But they would have the support of the, you know, parent teachers or, which I guess is a term that's no longer used, another, another name for the parent, old parent teachers associations.
May I ask a clarifying question? Currently, how are parents selected?
So the current parents that were on actually reached out and were interested, and I appointed them.
Okay, that's helpful information.
And that would be another route for parents, publicize it out there, that there are parents that are willing, and whether or not we just have them throw the name in, or there be some type of selection process that the superintendent goes through to go and identify who the representatives will be?
I feel like it should be a combination of both. Because as you're talking about parents who are involved in other groups, I've been to a booster meeting already this year. It's the same five people. And they're spread pretty thin, doing all the other things, project graduation, blah, 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 blah. I think that if people have a genuine interest, if it's advertised, they will let you know. And I think it's worthy to have a conversation. I mean, I think about how we're looking to have student representatives now, where we're going to interview them. It might be worthwhile just to kind of get a sense from the people who are interested to just kind of know what drives them to be present for that.
I do wonder, I like that idea a lot, and if it's a board advisory committee, shouldn't the board make the decision of who the parent representation is? So like, if we put together an easy Google form, that way folks that are interested could apply, and then hopefully we have more than two parents from every town, but wouldn't it make sense for the board to? I don't know. What do you guys think?
I like that idea. I think that we need to do the same process as before and put it out for parents to volunteer to sign up for this. But yeah, I think the board should probably decide who ultimately gets put in that committee, only because, not, not Andy specifically, but in the future, perhaps, there's a superintendent that selects people, not necessarily at random, doesn't necessarily keep things fair and even.
Yeah, and, and this is a good footprint to go and use if we need a committee like this in the future.
Right.
Alright, I mean, this committee can only stand as long as there is a need for them. And once the COVID, they say, is kind of over, then this committee would be dissolved after their final report. But something else will probably come along someday that'll need another committee, and if we've already got this framework out there, then it's kind of easy to move into it. So, your understanding is...
My understanding is that I will put out there and then bring those names back to the board. And I, and I would agree with Scott. I think, I don't think any one person should make the decision on, on who this is. I think, you know, if Scott says it correctly, you know, you tend to go to people you know. And so I think the entire board has to make that decision.
Okay, that's agreed upon? Alright, I think we're ready for the next sheet then.
So, under policy BDF, the purpose of the committee, so I have to, we have to put in writing what the committee does. And so, first of all, it's, it, we have to define the purpose of the committee. And I've, I've done some of this for you already. I wanted you to take a look at it. First of all, from my perspective, the purpose of the committee is to review items related to the COVID-19 pandemic, to make recommendations to the school board regarding health and safety measures in place in RSU four buildings. This would include review of CDC guidelines, Maine DOE, CDC, and the SOP, et cetera. So the composition of the committee is a requirement, which we've talked about already. The length of time each member is expected to serve. So one of the things that we had talked about at the last meeting was one year, a one-year term. And when you think about a, and I call it a fiscal year, this is school year FY22, which ends on June 30th. It would make sense to me that for this current committee, it would expire on June 30th, because then you'd have a new organizational meeting of the board, and the board membership may change in June. And so it would make sense to me that the board would then, if this committee is required longer, would come back to reform the committee. The role of the committee is only advisory, that's actually laid out in policy. The resources the board will provide. So I put a couple of things down there. I recommend the board provide staff on the committee the necessary time to complete the work during their workday, and the technology for all members to meet remotely. I think those are important things to do. Again, we've talked about this being a volunteer committee, so that would be my recommendation. Finally, expectations regarding the committee's relationship with the board. And remember, under this policy, I would put this in writing to the committee. So with the board, the superintendent personnel. So this committee would function as advisory only, with the understanding that the board, as an entire entity, will make the final decision on all recommendations. The board, the board member is an ex officio member with no voting rights, other than to present conversation from board meetings, as well as report to the full board at the next board meeting following a CPT meeting. The superintendent is also an ex officio member with no voting rights, who will attend the meeting to facilitate or make the decision to bring an outside facilitator in, an outside agent to facilitate. With regards to personnel, the employees are representatives of the various collective bargaining units under which they work. Staff should be notified of those representatives so that they can give feedback to them to the committee. That was a good one. The designation of the individual who'll be responsible for providing information to the public concerning the committee and its work, that would be me. The time and place, so I, I put in November 8th. Obviously, this was from the last meeting, so we'll have to design, set a new date for a meeting. I wouldn't do that until we actually have the public, members of the public appointed. But it would be via Zoom and then scheduled thereafter as the need arises. The meeting will be open to the public, but no public comment will be allowed. And that's actually, it's open to the public, but it's not a meeting with the public. Meeting minutes will be posted on the website for the general public, as well as a recording of the meeting. And finally, the timeline for progress reports. So the board member that is appointed by the board will be responsible for reporting progress to the board after each meeting of the committee. The committee will be dissolved on June 30th, 2022, unless the board determines that the work of the committee should continue, at which time new members will be determined.
Comments?
Can I make an addition?
Ah, okay.
Oh, go for it.
So I think we need to put something in there. We're gonna develop this team, and they're only gonna get half the school year to work before it's dismembered on June 30th. Versus, you know, you know, we get a one-year span, and people come in the fall, is it gonna be a whole new team, or are we gonna allow this first team to continue?
Yeah, I was going to recommend that at their first meeting, they basically would either draw straws, or we'd split them between those that would expire next June and the year after, the June after, so you don't have, you don't have a complete committee turnover every year. So basically, once you get on, you're on for two years, but just like when we formed the RSU, everybody was three, but we had to draw straws or whatever, who was gonna be the one year, who was gonna be the two and the three. So maybe they could do that. There might be some that only want to serve till next June. So put them in that bucket, and then put the others in the other bucket that would be June of the next year. And then I would take out that it dissolves automatically at June of next year. The committee stays in place as long as the COVID, which is its purpose, is causing us to have to evaluate what we're doing in the school buildings.
Can I add a caveat to that? What if, I'd like to see if a, if a parent or guardian no longer has a student, and they're rolling into the second year, that they're automatically in that one-year bucket?
Well, I would disagree, because you need, we're all taxpayers, we're all community members. We all have a vested interest in the education system. Even if our children have already graduated, or our children are too young and aren't in school quite yet, our grandkids. I think that is not allowing fair representation for the community. Kristen?
Can I ask a clarifying question? So I think what I'm hearing you say is, like, if you have a second grader at SPS, and you're representing SPS for this school year, next year there'll be Carrie Ricker, but you'll still be filling the slot that's representing SPS, so that voice of SPS isn't being heard. Is that what you were kind of alluding to?
Well, yes, but I was thinking more like you have a senior.
Okay, yeah, that too.
I mean, if we go back to the original slide, when we're making up composition, it clearly stated parent and didn't say community member. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last item.
It said parent, not community member.
Right. And I think it...
And I think it, personally, I believe it should be community members. Because it impacts my tax dollars, as well as it impacts the other tax dollars. Also impacts that, please, this is not a back and forth.
So where's the compromise there? I hear what you're saying loud and clear.
I mean, we're going to run into the problem, because we want them to identify schools and represent them that, as a student moves from one school to the next, and the parents lapse over. You run into that problem, you know, I mean, you always start these things with a certain spread, and then they always have a tendency to somehow move to something else just because.
And that's why when we had the one-year situation, we never would run into that with moving from school to school. I don't see a problem with perhaps that person reapplying.
Well, and when I put this together, that, that was actually my intent. Looking at a fiscal year or a school year, because of that very reason. We had talked about six parents, two from each town, and trying to cover that composition. And it brings up an interesting point, where you could have a second grader that's moving to Carrie Ricker, but you had somebody on fourth grade. That's why I had put in here the one-year term, this first one would expire. The policy is pretty clear that it has to have a final report date. So, we have to lay that out per policy, but that is an interesting problem to have, and I don't think you fix that if you have, you know, two-year terms.
So, when we say term limits, as a board, are we all under the agreement that they can't reapply? Or it just has an end date, and then if they want to apply for the next school year, they can do that?
It's almost like we're going to cancel the committee on the June 30th, and on July 1st, you'd re-implement it.
You would start over, but if I would, so if I was a parent on that committee and wanted to go for a second term, I could put in my application again? Or are we saying that you can only do one year? Because I think that's, that could be confusing.
Yeah, but just how many years? Can you reapply for 12? I mean, that doesn't really give a fair voice to everybody.
So I think as a board, we need to decide what we mean by one year. Does it mean one year, take a year off, and then you can reapply?
I think when I originally addressed this with Andy, that was what I, my thought was, is that you could reapply, but only one other time. I do like the experience aspect, it does, it is nice to have people know what they're talking about when they come. But they're not a board, though, it's an advisory committee, so do we really need the know-how, I guess, or how things are run, especially when we have people that are there facilitating and making things go smoothly?
Here's the point, I mean, it's nice to know what the history is, but do you, do you need to have many years of the history? Or can you be brought up to spring at the first meeting each year as the committee, the new committee's formed? With what's happened in the past?
I think, I think two, one of the things you have to think about is opening school in the fall. So, you know, depending on what this committee is, you know, when we finally get it off the ground, you have to remember, if, if we are still dealing with the situation that we're currently dealing with, we're going to have to make decisions before the start of the school year, next year. And, and again, I put in June 30th, but you could look at August 30th, you could look at September 30th, for this first committee, because you will need, if, if the COVID-19 pandemic continues beyond June 30th, you are going to have to make some decisions about what the fall looks like. That would have to happen in August, end of July.
And the sooner the better, because as the parents out there, you know, the sooner they can get the information, the sooner they can react on however they want to go and handle the situation. So, there is some risk with the June 30th, because how long is it going to take you to get the new? So if you're going to bring the public, the parents, to the board, the board doesn't meet in July. Doesn't meet till the end of August, which would mean we'd have to add board meetings in, in July, near the end of July, because you got to go out and interview and get the names in for the people that want to serve, to go and bring them to the board, to select them. So chances are, you're not going to have the committee maybe even together before the very end of July or first part of August, if they can make their recommendations, so that then we only have an opportunity to implement the policy or the recommendations on the fourth Wednesday of August, where school's starting in days.
Yeah, well, I, I would, I would recommend that we actually start the committee in October, and let us, because we know what it was like this summer, getting information, and knowing how fluid it was. So, I would rather start the committee in October, let us open up school, and then they have that institutional knowledge for the whole year. And then we reset the committee in October to ride out the rest of the year, and get us through the next summer, and start in October again. So this committee that we set up now would have until October, even, I would say, October 30th, to go all the way through.
Okay, is that agreeable?
Yeah.
See, a lot, Kristi?
Just one more thing.
Oh.
One more thing that I hope that we could add, the reporting. In my experience, and it's a small, six months at this point on the school board, but the reports were oral reports, there were no minutes, so you had to watch the videos. So if there's any way that we could ask that the CPT reports be written, a written report submitted to the board and available for the public, that way folks won't have to watch a two-hour meeting to know what happened. I think that would be beneficial.
Well, the recommendation they make will certainly be in writing, because it'll come to the board. But all the discussions to come up with their recommendation? You don't usually capture those too much in minutes anyway, right?
Right, so like, how our board official minutes are, like, I would like to see official communication from the CPT to the board, so it's on record.
Oh, I see, okay. Okay, once they come up with their recommendation, they put that in writing?
Right.
Submit it to the board, and also publish it?
Yes.
If you, if you look on number eight, on the requirements, that was one thing I recommend, there being is published minutes of the committee. I think that's really important. You know, a lot of people don't have the time to go watch a two-hour meeting. You know, it's difficult, so I think minutes have to be done. And honestly, as the facilitator, that would be the job of the facilitator, or someone designated, but.
Thank you.
Okay, we good on those? The only other comment I have, just because, and only because it goes outside of all of our other policies, and that's how the board member is selected. Our policies say the board chair appoints them. If, in this particular case, I would get a consensus on who the board would like, and then appoint them instead of a vote of the board. Because that's not how board members are appointed for anything. The same with the other standing committees that we have. We ask who wants to be there, and then kind of appointed to that spot. So I would like, just to leave it up to whoever the board chair is going to be, but board chair should get inputs from the committee, just like we did for the other committees, when who would like to go and serve, and then try and get a consensus, not really a vote, and then let the board chair appoint the person, as they do under our policy for committees. Any other?
You guys are going to be mad at me for backpedaling this far, but the, this committee is established to discuss COVID-19-related issues, and boy, I hope we don't have to have this committee roll year after year after year. I kind of see benefit to having this committee to address special items that come up, not necessarily COVID-related, because when that goes away, hopefully, we don't necessarily have to dissolve this, but perhaps we can task this committee with special things that don't fall under other committees, like, you know, finance or CAI.
Yeah, I think advisory committees are not allowed to be that way, they're for a specific purpose.
Okay.
And then they dissolve, and then you would form another one, but like I said, if we already have the output.
Well, and I understand what Scott's saying. I think there is benefit to having advisory committees. Under policy, the purpose of the committee, so there has to be a specific issue of study. So I think as issues come up, using this policy to create these kind of committees, now that you've done it once, you have a framework for it. And so that, but it would need to be a newly formed, because it has to have a specific study under policy.
Right, and it might be much more appropriate to have a different membership. And some of the people that are on there for COVID might not have anything to go and do with putting in a newer system. You know, or some, just to throw it out there, it might not be interested, but.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Here's a good point. If they don't fit in our standing committees, then we should do something else. Do we need any other on this? Any other discussion?
Yes, just because it's in my brain, how are we going to assess that this is going to work? So currently, I know, I'm sorry, but like, currently, parents didn't have a function to be able to say, like, the CPT, I think it came up in public comment a lot, so is there a way? And maybe we don't need to talk about this tonight, but is there a way to have feedback points? Maybe it's every quarter, just to kind of hear from folks to know whether or not it's working.
Robbie?
Like a Google form or whatever.
Yeah, but Kristi, we could, the.
Microphone?
Oh, sorry.
The CPT committee could have an open forum to hear from the public, and then report back to us. Just like we had one tonight, you know, the CPT could have that same open forum on Zoom or at a meeting, and then they could just report back to us.
That's a good idea.
Well, they could have, but there's no requirement to.
Right.
And I, for instance, as I was saying earlier, with the COVID mitigation plan, we flipped the switch, and we had no input from the community. We had input from CPT, but nothing from the community. And I feel like a lot of people didn't hear, have their voices heard.
Well, I think that by having the informational meeting at the CPT level, we would get that information.
Agreed, so can we make some sort of?
We would only get the information.
Requirement, or some feedback requirement at a specific timeframe?
We would only be getting COVID information, though, correct?
Right, absolutely, yes.
And.
It would only be what the committee is designated to look at. The CPT committee looks at COVID, so that's what they would cover.
Right. So I would imagine the CPT is going to have to be meeting at least monthly.
Right.
I mean, that's kind of what we were doing, because we want to, we want to stay on top of what's going on. Either reaffirm what we're doing to keep on going, or make the changes to go and modify it. So I think they're going to be probably needing to meet monthly. Hopefully no longer than, or more often than that, but there's always a possibility, big things can change.
And they, they could have a open comment section at the CPT meeting.
Well, but see, that kind of goes, you got to be careful, because advisory committees are open to the public, but they're not public meetings.
Right.
So you don't want to make sure that you start moving in and out of the scenario. Yeah.
So, one of the things you could do is, remember, laid out in policy, the purpose of the committee, the specific issue for study, and/or the scope of the committee's activity. So you could determine, I mean, if you're thinking about one year, so October 30th, you could determine that the committee would hold an open forum quarterly. That could be part of the scope of activity.
Is that what we want to do, is put something there to require it?
Yep, I'd be good with that.
Okay, now, the CPT committee typically has always met during the school day, because the number of staff, school staff that are involved, they get their time, just as we went and said in this policy, to go and work on this committee. So it's usually never conducted in the evenings or on the weekends. So that would mean that they're going to meet nine to 11, which is what we have been doing recently. That's when they're going to have their advisory meeting. I don't know how many people in the community are going to be able to dial in between nine and 11 on some Friday morning, or whenever it might be. But in order to have the committee members there, I am quite sure, based upon experience, that's going to have to be during the school hours. All right, for.
Might I also suggest that when we're putting the word out to parents, if they are interested in being on the committee, that we let them know of the meeting time? Because that could greatly influence their decision to be considered.
For sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's, you know, that just, throwing that out there for the advisory, how, you know, how much you're going to be able to get out of people in the middle of a school day? I think there's an opportunity for feedback at a board meeting. I mean, we could actually have an agenda item on the board, just like we did tonight for CPT, to talk about the CPT and how it's going, instead of requiring the CPT committee to do an advisory meeting. We can have an agenda adjustment, or item each quarter, to go and discuss the progress of CPT, and whether or not we believe it needs to even stay inactive anymore, and carry those types of things. That gives the public an opportunity to go and critique or compliment the CPT, and we can hear it then, and we have our discussion. That work, still gets accountability?
Yes.
Okay?
And, and I would, I would say, it's probably most important that the full board hear the community feedback. I mean, obviously, the CPT team could get community feedback. One of the reasons you put community parents on it is they can solicit community feedback. But I think ultimately, where this is an advisory committee only, and the full board would be making the decision, it's the board that has to have the community feedback.
Okay? All right, so are we done with the discussion of the CPT membership? Kind of the rules underneath it? So, in it, so what I believe, with the exception of what was printed up there, is a few things. We're going to increase the number of parental parents or community members.
Yeah.
Probably parents, because we want them to come from the schools. Oh, I mean, teachers, staff members, excuse me, staff members. Number of staff members to go to five, all right, from three. We're going to allow the board chair to appoint, after you get an idea who should serve on it. And then we're going to require that the board, on a quarterly basis, reevaluate and get inputs on the CPT functions. And then we had a couple of other?
The length of the, of the committee.
Length of the committee.
Ending October 30th.
One-year terms? One-year terms, it can be renewed? Expiring on October 30th? Okay? All right, was there any others? Okay, so then 6.2, to approve the formation of the collaborative planning team as a Board of Directors Advisory Committee per RSU number four Board of Directors Policy BDF, and direct the superintendent to provide in writing the necessary instructions to the advisory committee as prescribed in policy BDF. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
May I have a second? Any further discussion necessary? Kristi? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Thank you. New business. To approve the first reading of the following policy, JKA-A, use of physical restraint and seclusion. May I have a motion, please?
I'll spark one first, before we approve it. Andy, can you just give a little background of this, because there was some questions in the community?
As soon as we have it moved and seconded, we'll have discussion. All right?
Some moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
It doesn't matter.
I think Jen moved and Vicki seconded it. Okay, discussion?
Yeah, so we currently have in policy a chapter thirty, this was the old chapter 33, it's actually a state law. That law changed recently, and so this is the updated policy per law. This actually came directly from our attorneys. Every school district in the state has to adopt this policy.
These are the ones that baffle me. We have it in statute, then we got to put it in policy, I mean. Why don't we just let statute go?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Extension? You're going, okay, maybe I looked away too soon, I'm sorry. Yes. 7.2, to approve the first reading of the following policy, JKA-A-R, procedures on physical restraint and seclusion. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
So this is, this is the actual procedure. It's not actually required in law that the board adopt procedure. However, this board has always done that, and I think it's important with this one, this board does it as well.
Any other discussion? Other discussion? Other discussion, and CNN, all those in favor of the first reading? Thank you. 7.3, to elect Cynthia LaSalle as the grade seven math teacher at the Oak Hill Middle School as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Cynthia, wherever you may be. 7.4, to elect Erin Reynolds as a grade five reading teacher at Oak Hill Middle School as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Erin, for joining us, RSU four. 7.5, motion to approve increasing the subpay to $100 per day for non-certified substitutes. $110 for substitutes who hold a valid state of main teaching certificate, and $135 per day for nursing substitutes who hold a RN license.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
Yes, there's some questions.
Sure.
Um, so I know the process of becoming a substitute teacher.
Do you want to have the mic, please?
Oh, yes, sorry. And I understand in order to become a substitute teacher in our district, there is some expenses that candidates have to kind of personally absorb, right? So fingerprinting, background check?
Yep.
Um, is there any thought process around potentially covering that, so we can get more substitutes?
Sure. I mean, that, that is a decision this board can make. Um, you know, we haven't historically done that, but I, I, I think, so first of all, just some background here. Started looking at our subpay and realized, did some reaching out to our local schools around us, and we were too low. You know, currently, we're at 85, 90, and 120, and most places are 100 or more, and 130 or more for nurses. So it just felt to me, I mean, we, we have consistently struggled with subs for a long time. You know, one of the things about subbing I've, I've noticed in the last 10 years has been the fact of when the economy is good, um, we don't have a lot of subs. When the economy is not good, um, we have a lot of subs. Economy's been good for a while, so consistently. But if you look at wages across the nation, um, when you can go to McDonald's and make, start at $17 an hour, we've got to do better for ourselves. I, I agree with Christie. I think, you know, it costs, oh, Kathy reminded me, 55 for fingerprint. You know, it's not cheap. Um, and so, you know, you all can make the determination to cover the potential substitutes.
And also, I know we have new subs that came into the district this school year. We might want to think retro for those folks, too, just to say thanks.
We need an amendment?
Well, I don't know if you want to try and amend this one here to...
Which one?
Pay the, the, the background fee or the fingerprinting fee?
Yes.
The district pay it, or should we handle that either as a, as a separate item? And then also, at that time, we can deal with whether or not we want to do retroactive?
Yeah, let's do a separate.
All right, so that would be on an agenda for the next meeting.
Oh.
Right? I mean, it, let the public know we're going to discuss it. We don't like to, like, slip it in especially since we didn't make an agenda adjustment.
Well, while we're looking at that, are there any other expenses that one would endure?
For subbing?
Yes.
Can I, could I, what about bus drivers?
Sub bus drivers?
Right.
Um, so bus drivers, regardless of subs, whether they're subs or not, that's a position in the collective bargaining unit. So we pay that the hourly rate.
No, I'm talking about subs, so...
Right, same thing.
The hourly rate?
We pay them the hourly rate.
What about what they need to do to get certified?
Uh, we actually, we pick up that cost.
We do already?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So the question was, are there any other expenses outside of the background check?
Uh, back, the fingerprinting is about it, Kathy, I believe. No, nothing else besides that.
Because I saw the number, and I immediately thought the exact same thing that you did. I was like, wow, you could literally go to McDonald's and earn more than this. We got to step up.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other comments on the motion? No other comments on the motion? And at this time, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion? Thank you.
So I, from the conversation, I'm going to put another agenda item on for our next meeting regarding picking up the fees and potential retroactive fees for subs.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Eight, committee reports. Finance and Facilities, didn't meet tonight?
No.
Personnel and Policy Committee?
We didn't meet tonight.
CAI Technology Committee?
We did. Um, so, uh, first things we did is we looked at, uh, the overall results of the late start versus early release, uh, survey. And, um, really looking at next steps. Overall, with the information that we got, we got, uh, 40, almost 41% of people saying that they would prefer to keep, uh, Wednesdays as late start. But I also say that we had 762 responses, which is pretty phenomenal, so we had a pretty good, um, pool. Um, and then we had 61% say to change to early release on Wednesdays. This was pretty well represented from staff, parents, and students, um, which gave us a pretty clear indication that the next steps with this that we, um, talked about, um, were to have conversations with different people of creating a potential plan. With concerns of daycare in the afternoon, in meeting with administrative teams in regards to looking at supervision, um, and options, and how frequent this would happen, and scheduling. And also to recognize that, uh, we need to meet with the collective, um, bargaining teams to really look at this starting for next year. Uh, the intention and timeline with this is to hopefully have, uh, full information after consulting with all of these groups to come back so that the full board can then decide, um, so that then by, uh, February to March, um, everything could get rolling along with the scheduling process. So that was exciting. Um, secondly, we had Marco Alberti come and speak to us about, uh, one of the things that we had asked about was the numbers, um, with the scheduling this past year and looking at, um, the course offerings and how much, where we were with all of that. And knowing that we tend to offer a lot of classes and then see what the enrollment is, to see how that really goes. The highest enrollment of the newer classes were the robotics, the computer programming, um, what was the other one? Something along the lines of computer... Computer science. And theater, yes. Um, and I've, I've done that before. I know how difficult all of that is. So again, we really try to offer, um, all of what, and mostly what students need and what they would like. And then I just, we had a brief discussion about the fact that, um, Mr. Mack continues to hang on, and we love him. But the big concern, um, of looking at the continuation and possible expansion, um, in the next couple of years or more. For, back when I was in school, it was called industrial arts and all the things. But to be able to continue to provide that and eventually expand that, um, because we want to be able to continue to have that for students. And we know how much we need that for kids. So certification was an issue, and we would really like to have some push on the DOE in terms of saying, you offer conditional certification for a lot of other things. If you get people who have the appropriate industrial and safety certifications, wouldn't it be great if we could just have them kind of come in on a conditional? And that's it?
I will say with that, there may be a loophole in that law. So a couple of years ago, I had opened up a conversation with one of our local tech centers to potentially purchase the services of a tech center employee. So, and, and at the time, I was working with, uh, Meg Harvey, uh, who was at the department. She's, I don't know if she's still there or not. But Dwight Littlefield is the Director of CTE for the state, and I think when we were talking about that model, um, that, that gained some traction. So I think that may be a possibility, for sure. The other thing to remember, too, when it comes to late start versus early release, things like that, that would be a change in that policy and would require the meeting consultant. Yep.
Yep. And that's it?
Questions? So I just have a comment. Um, my experience on, although not in the education world, but in other places where we came in in the morning and got some training, and then we worked the rest of the afternoon. We had good attendance for the training, but oftentimes when we came in and worked in the morning and then we had training in the afternoon. Maybe training wasn't always participated at well. And I think the board has mentioned many times and re-stated that we feel those, what was the late start? Was the training that we provided, the professional training was very important, along with our professional development days. So let's don't lose sight of one of the reasons that we went to the late start, which was, really was, for, let our staff work together.
I have to say, Bob, that, um, I kind of, before I read all the comments, I kind of was in that same camp of saying, geez, you know, you show up in the morning, you have more focus, you get things done. I was quite surprised at how many, uh, professional staff responded saying, we would prefer to have it in the afternoon because then we wouldn't be pressed up against a deadline of having students showing up.
Good point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Honestly, I was quite surprised because I've experienced both, so, yeah.
And I would agree with Jen. I think you guys have heard me before say, you know, having been a teacher in an early release model, at the time, I didn't like it. And when I came to RSU four, this was in place. But I, I agree with Jen. After I looked at the disaggregated data from the survey, that was pretty overwhelming.
Yeah.
Can we make that available to the rest of the board?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if you wanted me to share for the rest of the board.
Yes, please.
Yeah, please.
There's 17 pages of comments.
All right. So I'll just download it and scroll. All right. Any other questions for Jen? All right, then we, uh, we move into board member comments. Yes, Robbie?
Yeah, I, I'm just, I'm glad of the back and forth that we had today, and I hope people got answers that they, you know, and I can understand more where the board is coming from. Because I think anytime you have an open dialogue and you have that back and forth, a lot of things can get ironed out that if they're not, they, they just fester. And I think, I think that was a good thing tonight. I was very impressed with the back and forth.
Any other board members?
I would agree. I think it's helpful. Um, I think sometimes we get caught up in, um, wanting a specific outcome. And again, I will say this over and over, when we back up and we take the 20,000-foot view of what the big picture is of things, um, we all have to work together. And we just have to be flexible, and we'll figure it out. But ultimately, it's to make sure that the kids are here and that they ultimately get what they need.
Any other comments?
Yes, I also want to echo that. Thank you for the open dialogue. I think it was useful. For people to have a calm discussion, although we didn't resolve anything, I do think that, uh, I hope that the CPT committee can take into consideration some clear-cut mask break, um, places, times, something for kids to get a break. And also, uh, I'm going to, I'll speak with Andy about it, but mask breaks being used as disciplinary measures for kids that aren't properly wearing masks, that, that has to go away.
Okay, any other comments? So all I have is thank everybody, those who attended, those online or in person. Thank the board for coming and for the honest exchange of, of ideas and thoughts back and forth in respectful manner. I appreciate it all. Just remind everybody, you probably don't need to be reminded, but tomorrow's Veterans Day, so...
Thank you, veterans.
Thank all who have served over the many years, and, uh, just give them a little thought tomorrow that whatever you're doing, your ability to do it is probably because somebody was able to step forward, volunteer, and represent the country and protect your rights. So, uh, enjoy the day, and we have, um, one meeting in November, and one in December is our, you know, what is scheduled. So we'll have some business that we got to get taken care of. I'd also like to remind my fellow committee members, with the exception of the one who has so graciously sent me their input for the superintendent's evaluation. Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
I, I didn't want to embarrass anybody. But then I will go and say, I haven't done mine either, so...
Okay. And I thought I would be late.
So with that being said, and no other business to come before the board, I will, uh, declare this meeting adjourned.